I would say almost like, you know, since let's say every pan right there. It's okay if we're painting those two people on the side, I don't really like that. You know what, it might be over there because that's the angle you need to get everyone.
Call the, um, regular meeting of the Quinn County Public Schools Board. Please come up and stand. Do you like? Did I, my honor, how long do we choose to play? I play for ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
And please keep in mind the family of Ida Jay. Ida worked for twenty years, over twenty years, in the business office in the public schools. And thank you very much.
Superintendent, please call the roll.
Mr. Regulon.
Present.
Mr. DiMeitchis.
Present.
Mrs. Hughley.
Present.
Miss Isola.
Present.
Mrs. Lebo.
Present.
Mrs. Mahoney.
Present.
And America.
Present.
Very good. And Quincy High School Representative, Omid Ali.
Approval of minutes of, uh, for December seventh, two thousand sixteen, a motion.
Motion approved.
Question by Mrs. Hughley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to open forum. Open forum is an opportunity for community input regarding Quincy Public Schools. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation. If no more than four minutes of the school committee, an individual may now exchange their time or yield to others. Is there anyone here who would like to speak at open forum?
Right up.
I do not.
Good evening, my name is Courtney Porteos. I live at eighty-six Ragland Street in Quincy Point, and I'd like to speak to you tonight in my capacity as co-president of Citywide PTO. At our December meeting, Madeline Roy, Erin Ferkins, Keith Sagala, and Dr. Chris Faro gave a presentation updating parents across the city on what's new and different about this year's MCAS two point oh test, both in terms of question types and delivery, in particular this year the computer-based format for fourth and eighth grade. I wanted to thank each of them for taking the time to prepare that presentation and communicate that important information to parents and caregivers. Anyone who couldn't make it that night, for anyone who couldn't make it that night, the slideshow and content resource manual that were presented at that meeting have been posted to the Quincy Public Schools homepage and the Citywide PTO Facebook page, and I would like to encourage all parents to download and read through the information. While the presentation answered many questions that parents had and provided a lot of additional insight, at our January meeting earlier this week, concerns remained about how prepared our students will be for the computer-based delivery of the test, both this year and in years to come. While our children have the necessary skills to thrive and succeed in a computer-based testing atmosphere, teaching skills like scrolling through a reading passage, toggling between two windows, and highlighting text can be fairly easily taught, but being able to use an on-screen protractor or organize thoughts on a screen to craft a page's long written response, or even typing in a draft that's been written down on scrap paper are more complex. Asking classroom teachers to take on the burden of teaching technology skills in addition to their primary responsibility of teaching content and concepts seems a little bit hard to swallow. Like all of us, some teachers are more tech savvy than others, some are more comfortable drafting written pieces on the computer than others. How well our students learn these computer skills should not come down to the classroom teacher. They should be taught these skills from someone who has a background in comfortability in computer systems. And think about what this opportunity could offer. It's an opportunity not just to prepare students for test-taking, but also to expand their technical knowledge, perhaps incorporating coding and programming, graphic design and web design, animation, creating and understanding databases and spreadsheets, and online safety. Skills that would be helpful and necessary to them during their time in the Quincy Public School system and beyond. We on Citywide PTO are going to continue this discussion, and we would like to offer to partner with the school department to tackle this challenge. We'd like to open a dialogue about how to address this new opportunity and explore options as to how we can prepare our students, not just for the new age of computer-based testing, but also to give them a leg up as they enter the world. We look forward to working together with you on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who'd like to speak at open forum this evening? Seeing no one, this portion of the meeting is closed. Section three, superintendent's report, staff recognition, Dr. Chris Faro.
Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Principal Rav Shah to come on, and introduce a very, very special guest, is really someone that has inspired us all.
Thank you Superintendent Chris Faro, good evening everybody. This is one I think few principals are able to do, is make this kind of an introduction, and that is to say, I've got someone who's assigned me who's been to another corner of the planet as far as Antarctica goes, so, uh, something very different and exciting, exciting for both the teacher, Karen Bukarsik of our science department, exciting for our department, exciting for the school and for the district. And she's got a bit of a brief presentation tonight to kind of share her experience this past fall, down there, very far away, um, in ways that are still showing up in her classroom and presentations to students, presentations to staff, and, uh, there she is all the way back from there, Karen Bukarsik.
Thank you very much. It's really a pleasure to be here and be able to share a few slides. It takes a while to pick out just the right ones for a short presentation, but first, I'd just like to thank the members of the committee, Mayor Koch. It's been a unbelievable experience and to be able to have the support, to be able to do so during a school year, it's rare for such a long type of professional development opportunity, and so I really appreciate the support I've received from the committee, from the school district, from my school. It's certainly helped in making the process easier to leave for an extended period of time, so thank you. I just have a few slides today to tell you a little bit about where I went and what the goal was, but before I start, I just want to talk a little bit about the program that I was a part of. It is a program called Polar Trek, and the Trek stands for Teachers and Researchers Exploring and Collaborating, and that's really exactly what the program is about. It sends teachers into the field with researchers in either the Arctic or the Antarctic in order to learn about current research, and then to be able to, uh, make that research available to the public in a way that may be easier to understand, as well as to students. And so I am in the process right now of developing lesson plans that I'll be utilizing in my classroom and working in coordination with the researchers in order to do so. So it brings in some of the more current science that, as a science teacher, I learned a little bit about some of the science in college, but it certainly has advanced since then, and so I'm getting sort of an update on what's happening in certain fields that apply to my teaching. So, uh, first of all, just to show you where I actually went, so I have this little slide that'll just sort of give you an idea of where I traveled to. On the first leg, I went to Dallas, which took about four and a half hours. I then got on a flight, a ten-hour flight, to Santiago, Chile, and then another four and a half hour flight to Punta Arenas, Chile. All told with layovers, it was a twenty-nine hour travel day, or two, until I reached port, and it was there that you can see I'm actually a little bit closer to my destination there, on the bottom of the earth. During my time on the expedition, I was working with researchers from the University of Rhode Island, Old Dominion University, the University of South Florida, and the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution, just in, on Cape Cod, aboard this three-hundred-and-eight-foot icebreaker called the Nathaniel B. Palmer. This is a ship that's owned by a US company and contracted by the National Science Foundation for research in the Antarctic. It's one of the only US icebreakers used for research. And so we spent five and a half weeks living aboard the ship and conducting oceanographic research in various areas of the southern ocean and around the western Antarctic Peninsula. So this is our cruise track that you can see on the red line as we traveled from Punta Arenas and went through some very famous locations like the Strait of Magellan, the Drake Passage, which is that big area of open water that you can see in the middle of the two continents, and that is definitely known for rough sea conditions. We did see sea conditions of about twenty-five feet on certain days, which I loved, but not everyone did. And along the way, along those red lines, we spent a majority of our time stopping and taking water samples and running experiments on a specific type of organism. And those would be these diatoms. So diatoms are a type of algae, and they are the basis of the food chain all over the world, and especially in Antarctica where they are able to photosynthesize, capturing the sun's light, and then transferring that to all of the other animals through food sources. And these diatoms are a really important source of productivity in the southern ocean. And so the goal of the researchers was to collect these diatoms and water samples to be able to run experiments and find out more about how these diatoms are thriving and their interactions with other organisms in the different locations. To do this, we spent most of our time out on the deck, in rough sea conditions, in cold sea conditions. It was snowing, there would be ice on the decks. It was rather cold most of the time, but it was really enjoyable. And we would collect water samples as well as different oceanographic data like water temperature and the amount of light saturation in the water, in order to get an overall picture of the ecosystem in these different areas. On board, we also had a chance to use some tools that I use regularly in my classroom, including microscopes, learning more advanced ways of isolating cells and culturing cells, so that's something that we're definitely going to be incorporating into classroom activities. We did DNA and RNA sampling, and you might notice in the picture on the top left-hand side that Kim there from Old Dominion University is in her big, we call it puffy red, her big Antarctic gear, because the temperature inside of that cooler had to stay the same temperature as the water in the area, so she was constantly in there in full gear because it was quite cold, to keep those diatoms alive. One of the coolest experiences was the ice sampling that we were able to do. We did go out on small Zodiacs to sample ice, and also, I wasn't able to do it, but some of the researchers got onboard this man basket, is what they called it, and they were actually taken over the side of the ship and put on the ice in order to sample some of the ice, so it was a pretty exciting experience. I can't leave out the wildlife that I saw. I also teach a zoology class at North, and part of that is to identify a lot of the animals, and so this is certainly going to add to the curriculum by being able to talk about animals that are only found in that location on earth. So, the list is a bit long, but you can see some of them in the photos there. We saw seals constantly, penguins, whales, and lots of seabirds, which was really exciting. This is just one picture that I wanted to show you of my bucket list items. This is a leopard seal, which are only found in Antarctica, and certainly was an exciting day for me, and I was happy to be able to share that with my students through my journals because it certainly was a highlight of the trip for me. Also saw penguins every once in a while, you can see them on that giant iceberg. I tried to pick some of the best pictures, and we saw orca whales along with humpback whales while we were there, so that was also exciting. And then I just have some scenery pictures to show that it definitely is a land of ice, very mountainous, lots of snow, and certainly very different scenery each day. So every day was a little different, but always exciting. So this is one of my, I didn't doctor any of the photos because I wanted you, I want everyone to see what it actually looks like. And this is one of my favorites, just showing the beautiful colors that I saw while I was there of the icebergs. So, thank you very much again for your support, and I do have to always thank the National Science Foundation, their grant is the reason that I was able to go and have the support back here as well within the school. So again, thank you very much, and I hope you enjoy the pictures.
Any more, anybody have a question?
Oh yeah. I could talk for three hours, so if you had any.
We have time.
Is that all?
I just want to say thank you for being so courageous and adventuresome. I think our students certainly will benefit. I know, just this brief presentation, I was looking forward to it coming in tonight, especially, you know, as someone who gets seasick of rocking the chair, so.
You would not have enjoyed it.
No, not at all. But thank you, I mean, I think it just exposes our students to just a different world. I mean, you know, obviously, this is just so, so out there, thank you for that.
You're very welcome, thank you.
I have a question. Did you go on land at any time, or were you on the boat the whole time?
We did not. It was, uh, the way the program was written and the proposal of the scientists, we were not given permission to actually go on land, so unfortunately, but I did touch the fast ice, which is connected to the land, so that counts, in my opinion.
I just too admire your courage and bravery, that's fantastic.
Dr. Chris Faro?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you very much. You know, I know I've watched proud of you, and I know all of North Quincy High School is very, very proud of you, and you sharing your passion just by talking about limiting, you know, it must have been very, very difficult to limit how many slides.
Yeah.
Take like your beautiful slides, and, um, and I know you'll share everything with your students, and they'll become as passionate as you are. So all I can say is thank you for presenting Quincy Public Schools so far.
You're welcome, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Chris Faro, you continue on your.
Yeah, I also wanted to congratulate North Quincy High School, January twenty-first, the High School Quiz Bowl, they're back again, which is outstanding, and Amanda Ngo and Peter Anderson and Ethan Sit and Nick Andre and Nick O'Connell represent North Quincy High School, along with one of the best coaches, Danielle Fernandez as well, Mary Chris too, so look forward to that, and congratulations to our students at North Quincy High School Board, and thank you. We have just a few of our leadership team people that I think are going to come up and highlight some within the superintendent's report, some of our initiatives, so Rita, why don't you come up first? Did Mara want to come in front of you? It's okay Mara, you're playing the director role now. But you are on definitely.
Good evening Mayor, Superintendent, Vice Chair, and school committee members. It's hard to believe that this is the third year Quincy Public Schools will be participating in the manner of all this initiative. Booster ambulance staff along with our school nurses, health and physical education teachers will be involved in this very special initiative. I would like to say we are very fortunate to have Booster Ambulance Service as one of our dedicated community business partners. During the months of January and February, all eighth-grade students may be learning more about heart health. They will be exposed to curriculum and supplemental materials in the classroom in preparation for an opportunity to learn about cardiopulmonary resuscitation, CPR. Licensed Booster Ambulance Staff will teach them the course on Friends and Family CPR. Students will have access to information, materials, resources, and American Heart Association links, which have been posted on our QPS and individual school websites. Examples of some of these materials include the history of CPR, CPR statistics, cut fat, risk factors, target heart rates, and heart attack or cardiac arrest, how are they different? Information about this initiative can also be found on the Quincy Access Cable, Channel twenty-two. In addition, Booster Ambulance Services is offering the opportunity for grade eight students, their parents or guardians, to participate in a no-cost, full CPR AED certification class on Saturday, February fourth, from eight-thirty to twelve, in the Central Middle School Gymnasium. The snow date for this will be the following Saturday, February eleventh. We had amazing turnout these past two years, certified approximately two hundred students and parents. Transportation to and from Central Middle School will also be provided for students and parents from all middle schools if they wish to participate. There are a few people I'd like to thank for this program, and first I'd like to thank the superintendent for his vision and support, the middle school principals for being onboard and adjusting their building schedules to accommodate us, the nurses as well as the health and physical education teachers for being a part of this and educating the students about the importance of knowing how to perform CPR with emergency. Last but not least, Booster Ambulance Service and their staff for their dedication and commitment to Quincy Public Schools. They have done an amazing job, and if it wasn't for them, we would not be able to offer our grade eight students this incredible opportunity. Thank you.
And as Mara comes up, thank you, and as Mara comes up, I also want to say that on February ninth, we knew our student council leadership, for so many of our student councils at the elementary level, we held a Toral Room, that's February ninth, nine to eleven-thirty, certainly you're welcome if you're, if you work, can afford that time with us, our partners YMCA, Arbella, the Dependable Plan, isn't of course the Toral Room. And with that, Mara.
Thank you, good evening everybody, it's nice to see everybody. I just want to be able to thank everybody for the success of the Mayor's Seventh Annual Substance Abuse Prevention Week. All of you have always supported all the programming that happens this year, and the funding from the Mayor's Office, and from the Thompson family makes it all happen, along with the important staff members that really organize and plan the programming and the events, and that would be Kristen Hulahan, the nurse at North Quincy High School, Ryan Herligh, the health interventionist at North Quincy High School, Carrie Ann Hart, the health interventionist at Quincy High, Kathy Terranco, the nurse at Quincy High School. Students participated in a number of programs throughout the week. They were fortunate enough to have Travis Roy come back, he's actually spoken at North Quincy High School for the first time for Quincy High School. And you might ask yourself what Travis Roy's presentation would have to do with substance abuse prevention, and we really felt strongly that his message about living a purposeful life after having a tragedy come upon you, and his soft-spoken way is very, very powerful. He seemed to have a conversation with students, you couldn't hear a hint draw, so we were really moved as were the students around his presentation. He also talks about, and almost gives kids permission to support each other with kindness and love, and for high schools, for high school kids, that might seem a little awkward maybe to get from a presenter, but it was well-received. They really related to his courage and purpose for life, so we were glad to have that presentation. Throughout the week, too, Impact Quincy, so that's through Bay State Community Services, did a game show kind of presentation where kids participated in a trivia about the risks and consequences for substance abuse, so they kind of had teams, they won prizes, and that went really well at each high school. Also, there was a fair, so we, they had kind of like a health fair kind of setup, and we had many representatives from the community, we had Lieutenant Glenn from Quincy Police Department, Laura Martin, who is the new coordinator for substance abuse prevention for the city, DA Michael Morrissey's office had a representative, Kathy Diddy and Nancy Hall, our parent representatives were there, Impact Quincy, Quincy Fire Department, Unit Health, Kinkrider from Unit Health, and Gavin House. So, they each had a station and had information about what their agencies do in terms of maybe overdose response, Narcan, prevention and education, so I think it was a really strong message for students to see that there are community members that are invested and care about them, and there are resources for maybe some families that might be struggling and some hope, so we were very happy with that turnout and support in the community. We have events to look forward to, this isn't just one week, you know, there's ongoing curriculum at the high school through the health interventions, through their life skills curriculum. We also have a Chris Herron presentation for grade nine coming up in the spring. At the middle school level, the health educators have been talking about refusal skills, care pressure, and that's aligned with their curriculum. I'm really proud of the health educators at the middle school, they came up with guided discussions from improbable players, so that's a presentation that shows, shares a story that's struggling their actors, it's theatrical performance, struggling with addiction, and so those, it's a very powerful presentation, so after that presentation, health educators were able to have class discussions and lessons related to that presentation, which I thought was very, very powerful. And of course, we're planning another Healthy Choices Family Night in the spring, so there'll be a parent presentation and lots of fun activities, and for the middle school and elementary kids led by high school students, so we're excited about that, and I'll keep you close the door.
Very good, thank you. And as we, as we go through so much of the program, I'll thank you for the health educators that contributed such a great difference in the way our school played, and there, so thank you very much for that. And next, as you can see, is Mr. Sagala, he speaks on the Mayor's Capitol.
Thank you Dr. Grant, good evening everyone. So I just wanted to briefly update you on Mayor Koch's capital improvement plan, in particular the technology plan for Quincy Public Schools. I believe Laura has passed out a color-coded matrix updated. If you see that tier one, that second column, over the past two and a half weeks, our IT technicians have replaced two-hundred-and-eighty academic classroom teacher computers, that's a pretty big endeavor, and they certainly did an exceptional job. The tier two, that next column, replacement of eight technology labs will take place over the next two and a half weeks. What's going on now apparently is the access administration for our PL students, so as sites complete that access online administration, we will replace those computers in the technology labs. We've certainly completed Stock Harbor, but we will continue with the other seven labs. Tier three is the technology Chromebook lab, mobile carts, excuse me, and there's eight of them, and over the next, by March first, they will be installed in our sites and will provide adequate amount of time for our students to practice on those tablets, approximately about four weeks for the MCAS two point zero. And tier four is the installation of our Geno boards and shortbread projectors, and their installation is to begin the week of January thirtieth, will begin at the high school level and work backwards, so that during the February vacation, we'll be able to install this equipment in our elementary schools, avoiding any disruptions in classrooms. So, we're anticipating eighty-two classrooms to be created beyond, right beyond the February vacation. Once again, I'd like to thank the IT technicians, and Al Hunter, certainly Chuck Phelan and Siggy T, as well as Mayor Koch for his support. The good news on the, yes, some other good news, prior to the holiday recess, Quincy Public Schools received notification of a STEM Equipment and Supplies Grand Award from the Massachusetts Life Science Centers. Inspiring middle school students through technology, a multi-year initiative to train middle school students in life sciences, technology, and research through innovative digital and real-world learning experiences. Our proposals to purchase a suite of state-of-the-art equipment to promote the Massachusetts science, technology, and engineering standards through hands-on classroom activity. science, technology, and engineering standards through hands-on classroom activities with practical and professional applications. The proposal request of $122,000 for technology equipment and supplies includes five mobile carts equipped with 10 Surface Pro type 3D printers, accompanied by five laptops, and 10 Lego Mindstorm robot kits. In addition, stipends for professional staff members and training for approximate 15 middle schools, science, math, and technology engineers who will participate in our summer STEM collaboration this summer. So we're very, very excited about this grant proposal. Again, thank you, Mayor Koch, for your support and allowing and lending. Grant writer, who worked directly with our teachers, our math, science, and tech engineer teachers, as well as SLT members, Matty and myself, to co-author this wonderful competitive grant.
Thank you very much. And Matty?
Thank you for having me tonight. What I'm going to do is give an update on the Advanced Placement Pathways Initiative. That is a team that is...
I thought we were going to do that a little later.
Yes, so why rephrase?
I just wanted to come up. You know, the 2.0 presentation, you know, that Courtney had referenced, you know, the kinds of things that we talked about that night and stuff.
Okay. Yes, the site-based planning team.
I'm so sorry.
Because we've really, you know, from that presentation, which I, you know, thank you Courtney, was very well received, you know, where are we going to go? Kind of some of the things that we talked about with the leadership team, you know?
Yes, I'm with you now. I am. So I'm with you. So there is a lot going on, and there is a tremendous emphasis, as always is every year, on the MCAST testing, but this year in particular, because it is a newly designed test, and our fourth and eighth graders will be taking it on the computer. So we've actually, as the Department of Education has been putting out information and guidance documents, the superintendent's leadership team has been making sure we attend those webinars and those conference calls, and then we use our principal meetings and our curriculum assessment management team meetings to relay the information. So some of the work that we talked about, we were sort of just beginning and promising at the Citywide PTO meeting, was that every building, all 11 elementary schools, the five middle schools, would have a site-based planning team, so that there would be information that would come from us, as it's coming from the department, and that we would give, review the guidelines and recommendations and suggestions, but then every site would have its own group to sort of do their own needs assessment and create some opportunities at their building for their teachers and students. So I'm very pleased to say that we've had formal meetings with site-based teams, and they have met numerous times at their buildings, and they are creating PowerPoint presentations and computer-based training for their own staff. They have come up, they have redesigned their schedules for their computer labs, so that fourth and eighth grade students get the priority in the labs to take practice tests, sample items, and to practice those computer or technology-embedded tools that will be a part of the tests. The department is very soon, they said in January, they would actually release the first practice test for MCAST 2.0, so we are eagerly awaiting that. And we also had the technology engineers and the library media specialists come together, who know so many of our students so well, and we said to them, what do you think about this idea of our fourth and eighth graders taking the computer-based test? Where do you think our students are? And they, we were very pleasantly surprised to hear their confidence. Then they went above and beyond, and they've actually created a tutorial for our staff to learn about the technology-embedded tools. About a 15-minute tutorial that can be taken individually with team members or full staff, and can be referred to often. They've come up with some technology surveys, some mini-surveys for students to take. Now, we anticipate that the kids are feeling very confident, and as they fill out the surveys, they may mark themselves as pretty proficient or advanced on the skills. But there are a number of new features that they may not have used before, either on the math test or on the writing ELA. So, and they also, our technology engineers and our library media specialists also looked at the Department of Ed's Technology Skills or Standards, Digital Literacy Skills, and they made an alignment chart for our staff that shows all the things that they cover when they're with students, and what's still sort of left open that we would need some extra support from either content area teachers, principals, or superintendent's leadership team. We just recently put on the website, thank you to Laura, the presentation from the Citywide PTO, Keith's Matrix of the Equipment, and a Parent Resource Guide, and we are welcome to share any vocal PTO comments.
And thank you. Many of our sites are having MCAST or PTO meetings for their parents, and you did a nice job there. Thank you. Yeah, that was excellent. So we're doing that, and as well, we're glad to meet with the executive board to plan another event, if that's what you'd like to, for us to come to a meeting and update some of the things that we're doing. We can talk to you about that as we go. Excuse me, Rick. I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Matty, but I have a follow-up question today. And thank you, Keith, too. So it's reassuring to hear that we have more technology getting out there and getting into the kids' hands for this test. And I understand what's happening at the middle school because of the technology teachers and the library media specialists, but we don't have those positions in the elementary schools. So who's teaching the technical skills, especially in light of the fact that some of the teachers may not be as technically savvy as others?
Okay, at the elementary in particular. So the same process when we went through with the elementary, the site-based teams, and the resources are being shared with the elementaries as well. And so some of the creative ways they're coming up with, certainly there are some things that the classroom teachers in their content area, through practice items or practice tests, will expose the children to. They're also coming up with creative ways for before or after school, for beyond the bell opportunities, and they are using their library specialists in creative ways as well. So our elementary library specialists have already been using online programs, so now what we're doing is we're asking them to sort of shift and help share in exposing and introducing the children to the tutorial.
So you guys are making sure that all of the grade four students have equal access during the school day and access to more things out?
Grade four and grade eight are the priority.
I'm sure grade eight is covered because they have the professionals in the building, and I'm sure that the library assists people at the elementaries can help, but they may not have the same skills either.
Right. And I think, as was mentioned, there are some teachers who are more comfortable and tech savvy at the elementary level. They've been incredible, taking a role at their fourth grade level in ELA and math, and making sure that they understand the tutorial inside and out, and are sharing that with their colleagues, while principals make time, grade level time, vertical meeting time during the school day.
So I know that we're preparing fourth graders for the test, but what about the third graders? So are we...I'm sorry, this is, it's okay, a can of worms, so.
Yeah.
And then, do we answer that question?
So everything we're doing, we understand that we need to prepare all the students three days eventually. So the priority area is fourth and eighth, but if a building or a site base feels that they're ready to expand that, or they have their resources, then they will. But we're also going to create this summer, we're actually going to create a curriculum. And now who's going to actually implement it? We're not sure. That'll be part of the design and decision-making, but we'll put the best resources together, have that ready to roll right away in September.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, when you mentioned the before-school and after-school programs, those are limited by space, correct?
Yeah.
So that, does that create a disparity in the class, or how do the kids get picked for that? Because that's kind of one of those things that I tend to get sensitive about, because the test has to be taken by everybody, and the equitability of the learning process may not be the same if it's being offered before or after school, so I do...
So the elementary principals know that they can't rely on the beyond the bell in order to get every child exposed and introduced, so things have to be created during the instructional day. And if they were created for before or after school, any child would be invited.
So if it's first come, first served or...
You mean, is space required? Well, they may have to do, run something multiple days in order to get all the children in.
So it is something sort of before the bell, and it's going to be something that all students, if families want them to, can have access to?
I think the site-based teams are doing an incredible job of thinking outside of the box, and really thinking about the needs of their kids. If they can address them during the school day, they will, and if they can't, then we ask them to create those opportunities.
Okay, so I guess that's still, it's a nice word to say, everybody has enough opportunity, but I guess in front of my eyes, if somebody's struggling with the technology, which I don't imagine that they would, because a lot of these kids are exposed to technology, but let's just say somebody is struggling, doesn't have the access to the stuff at home, would they be first offered that before, after, you know, before the bell, after the bell program thing?
I'm going to confidently say yes. I mean, I agree, it seems like we would make that priority.
Although it feels like a million years ago as an elementary, those and the title of the programs before, you know, before the bell is definitely, the tagline's been picked up since then. Some of those programs were, you know, if you missed the 48-hour turnaround to get your slip in, didn't get into those programs, it's not that, just want to make sure. Because that's, this is a totally different type of program, and it's not hand-selected for kids that are maybe struggling for testing, that's not, again, totally different, because it's technology, so it should be equally serving.
I think the principals, we met with the primary today, we met with the middle school yesterday, we talked about the extended day programs before the bell, after the bell, and they realized that, two things. Number one, that they stress assessment for a lot of different, there may be kids that need to go from proficient to advanced, from these improvements to proficient, they have all that data, so that's what they can focus on. But the other part is to, you know, when we first started talking about our extracurricular and our activity study call, some of it was about enrichment. So I want them to balance that, so they'll be talking about submitting plans to us that do balance the, that assessment piece, you know, that 2.0 type of piece, as well as the enrichment.
Yeah, I would hate to see that, all may, because it is, it's opportunities for so many other things for them to do. Going back to maybe the curriculum that you're discussing, too, I know that teaching them to use the technology, to be able to take the test is great. Will the curriculum in elementary be expanded maybe to offer, I know we do it like a technology really curriculum code for an hour, but that type of stuff, would you, do you see that enhancing maybe the curriculum going forward, where we could maybe introduce that to the elementary schools? It is kind of a fun program that they have, but...
I think coding plays a part. As Mrs. Perrios mentioned, she mentioned coding, animation, database. The key to getting the children to practice these tools is to give them something engaging to do with them, and that's what we would strive for with the curriculum.
It's all about, everything's kind of converging together, so it is kind of important. What we had 10 years ago is totally different what kids are doing now, and education is going to be that much different probably in only five years. All the technology we're buying now, we'll be buying more, you know, it's changing so rapidly, and I just want to make sure that we're taking advantage of what we have, educating kind of the pipes that we're ready for those changes that are coming up. And I want people to remember at home, too, that this testing became a requirement, so it was, you know, all schools and all districts are trying to jump ahead of this, but it's not like you weren't given tons of warning for this. It's, we knew this was coming, but we had to do it this year, and it had to come in different places, isn't that correct?
That's correct. And the other thing to remember is that...
And you did give the information until they...
They are developing and then putting out as they develop it, so there are technology-embedded tools that even some, our teachers need to learn how to do, because it's only showing up right now in the test, maybe an online resource or an app that they've used, or their students hasn't touched upon that tool. But we're pretty confident that from the majority of them, the children have had experience, but there are some new that both teachers and students need to learn.
I just wanted to make sure for those informs for us to bring back to Citywide, that is a true review that we knew, met with the parents, but that's something that we all have to be aware of, that although we can be, we can try to be the best prepared, get our students the best prepared, get our teachers the best prepared, some of us, we can't prepare for because it's not ready. It's amazing. I have utmost respect for educators in the public world, because it's a challenge to keep up with things. Thank you.
With that, what I'd like to do with the committee is, when we get to new business C, just we'll put that off for our Teaching and Learning Act, and that that was the advanced pathway, we can do that at another time with your permission. If I could just do two more items, and that would offset the...